Going to order the meeting of the Arlington Select Board for Monday, December 21st, 2020. As a preliminary matter, this is John Hurd, Select Board Chair. Permit me to confirm that all members in person anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Diane Mahan?
Yes.
Joe Carroll?
Yes.
Steve DeCoursey?
Yes.
And Len Diggins?
Yes, but I gotta get back to the North Pole real soon.
We should be getting you there quick. Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Adam Chapdeline?
Yes.
Doug The Time?
Yes.
And Board Minister for Ashleigh Maher is participating remotely. Good evening. This meeting of the Arlington Select Board is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth, given the outbreak of the novel coronavirus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the virus and reduce risk of COVID-19 illness, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings and as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order which can find posted with the agenda materials for this meeting allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely. Sorry. So long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting, ensuring public access does not short public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will not feature public comment. Even members of the public do not provide comment. Participants are advised that people may be listening who do not provide comment and those persons are not required to identify themselves. For this meeting, the Select Board is convening by Zoom as posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded, that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and take care not to screen share your computer. Anything you broadcast may be captured by the recording. Please also take care to adjust your screen or device name if you would like to speak in order to for us to recognize speakers appropriately and develop accurate minutes is helpful for participants to see your full first and last name when calling upon you rather than nickname. All the materials for this meeting except any executive session materials are available on the Novus Agenda Dashboard, and we recommend members in the public follow the agenda as posted on Novus unless the chair notes otherwise. We are now turning to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the chair will go down the line of members inviting each by name to write any comments, questions, or motions until. Please hold until your name is called. Further, remember that to mute your phone or computer when you're not speaking, please remember to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in colloquy with other members, please do so through the chair. Take care to identify yourself. Finally, each vote tonight will be taken by roll call vote. That takes us to the second item on our agenda, letter regarding the virtual town meeting. Mr. Diggins?
Yes, oh, as I said the last time we met, I wanted to submit a letter to my colleagues to let you all know who all participated in helping us to conduct virtual town meeting. And as you can see from the list, it was quite a large number of folks, and that's just testament to the fact that no one can do something like that alone. And and this town, for all we may bitterly fight over lots of issues, we can come together and 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 work to make something happen. And I can't thank the folks on that list enough and also the town meeting members who participated in it. And when I sent a similar letter to the town meeting members and and folks who contributed earlier, there were four names that I left off. I just want to bring extra attention to them tonight. That would be Lynette Coverhouse and Judd Pearson, I think Pierce, who helped with the town, the precinct meetings. And also Kelly Lineama, who is a senior planner on the staff, and she's been a person who's helped with the precinct meetings all along. And and there was a fourth person, and right now it's blank in my mind. I didn't write the list down. So maybe it'll come to me and I'll come back to that. But anyways, I just want to thank everyone and and now it's part of the official record.
Thank you. And Mr. Carroll, do you have a motion to receive?
I do. I move receipt.
Second, thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. DeCoursey, any comments?
Just very briefly, thank you, Mr. Diggins, for the for the letter and all the work that you had done. We'd mentioned that earlier. And I also want to call out two people that you mentioned in the letter, but to work in our office, Ashley Maher and Lauren Costa for all the work that they have done throughout the year and for the work they did with Town Meeting as well.
Thank you. Any final comments, Mr. Diggins?
Yes, yes. And that fourth person is Carol Band, who helped get the packets out. So I had actually put someone else in her place. So once again, when you try to keep a list like that, sometimes it's not perfect, but you can't be afraid of making mistakes. And thankfully, they chimed in and now they're part of the record. Thank you.
When you make a list, you check it twice, Mr. Diggins.
Yes, I know. Thank you very much.
I can't, I can't.
We have a motion to receive from Mr. Carroll, seconded by Mrs. Mahan, Attorney Hahn.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
It's unanimous vote.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is our consent agenda. We just have meeting minutes of meetings, December 7th, 2020. Mrs. DeCoursey?
Yes, I move approval of the minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Diggins?
I second.
Any additional comments, Mrs. Mahan?
No, thank you.
And Mr. Carroll?
No additional comments.
Attorney Hahn?
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
It's unanimous vote.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is licenses and permits for approval license renewals. So in our packet, we have a list of renewals for contractor drainier layer license, class one, class two, and class two non-preminent premises, auctioneer, lodging houses, innkeepers, secondhand dealer, public entertainment, automatic amusement, food vendor, common victular, wine and malt beverage only restaurant, all alcohol restaurant, all alcohol club, theater license, all alcohol package store, and sidewalk cafe. Mrs. Mahan?
Um, I have a question, but first I'd like to move approval.
Thank you.
And my question would be either to you, Mr. Chair, or through you to Town Council. In contained in these licenses and permits are some businesses that I believe no longer are here in Arlington, like Adventure Pub, Common Ground, Tango, perhaps one or two others. They are in there, but do they just go away by attrition or they're in there? How do we handle that? Or how do we not do not have to handle that?
Hahn?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think the board can still vote on a single slate if it likes. At the end of the day, if a business closes as a condition of its license, it loses any common victular alcohol license associated therewith unless there's some sort of specific petition to transfer relations or do something of that nature. So for those that have been sort of added on here, whether it was an oversight or whether they asked to be renewed before their closure, you could still vote as a slate and essentially those licenses will be defunct.
Okay, and I thank you, Attorney Hahn and Mr. Hurd. I would just ask Ms. Maher that that one or two sentence statement that Attorney Hahn stated to us be included so that we can vote this as a slate. Thank you, Mr. Hurd.
Thank you. Mr. Carroll?
Yeah, I'll second the motion. I have no further comments. Thank you.
Mr. Diggins, any comments?
I was just curious. I mean, is the number of closures any higher than it is a normal year? I mean, given, I'm expecting it's higher, but I'm just kind of curious.
I don't have the actual information, but I can almost.
No problem. I can ask someone else later on. Thank you. No other comment.
Yeah, I think the answer is yes. And Mr. DeCoursey?
I had no comment.
All right. Attorney Hahn?
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
It's unanimous vote.
Thank you.
And I'll note that it's as with with Miss Mahan's comment.
Great. And that brings us to the next item on our agenda, traffic rules in order on the business. Item number five, discussion and approval. CDBG citizen participation plan amendments. Mr. Chapdeline?
Thank you, Mr. Hurd. So this has been put forth before the board by the Department of Planning and Community Development, and it's a proposed amendment to the CDBG plan and process that this board approved, I believe, several years ago. And this amendment is in conformance with all regulations and statutes. And really what it will do is allow the planning department to more quickly issue the draft plan, which then can be turned into the final plan once approved by HUD after all public hearings are held. The current planning requires that the draft plan can't be issued, or I believe actually the plan can't be finalized until 14 days after the final public hearing. So what this would do is remove that requirement of 14 days after the hearing for the plan to be finalized so that more quickly we could be putting the plan into action and thereby the funding into action. Mr. Hurd, you're on mute.
Sorry about that. Mrs. DeCoursey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I move approval of the amendment as contained in page two of the Town Manager's memorandum to us.
Thank you. And Mr. Carroll?
I'll second the motion. No further comment.
Thank you. Mr. Diggins?
Well, once again, I'm just kind of curious. What was the rationale for the 14-day delay?
You know, I have to be honest, I don't know what the rationale was originally for the inclusion of the 14-day delay. It could have been at that time, that's what HUD requirements called for, but I'm not sure why it was originally there.
That's fine. I mean, yes, I'm totally on board with this. Makes sense.
And Mrs. Mahan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I put this question out. It may not have a quick answer to it. What we're voting here obviously pertains to our normal CDBG activities that start usually in January of every year. But with the coronavirus and COVID-19, where we do, we have received two additional allocation of CARES Act funding. How, if any, way does this vote affect the past two CARES Act funding and/or any future?
So it does not affect the past two, Mr. Chair. That's okay if I answer. It does not affect the past two as those are already approved and now issued. And my understanding, if I suppose, assuming was there to be a further CARES Act CDBG funding, the first two had been allowed to be conducted under, let's call them, emergency rules, not in strict accordance with the normal course of business plan. So those timelines had already been more streamlined than what we normally do. So assuming that, I guess, two assumptions, one, that there is more CARES CDBG money, and then if there is, that they operate it in the same way, this likely would not impact it. But should they not allow us to operate it in that streamlined fashion, this would provide a streamlining such that after the board's final hearing on any new funding, the plan could be issued in a more timely fashion than the current, the current regulations allow or the current plan allows.
Okay, and I would just ask the Town Manager, Mr. Chapdeline, I totally agree with your summation in terms of eliminating the 14-day backdating or post-dating requirement regarding regular CDBG. And I do accept that this would apply to if there were any further federal funding would allow us that accelerated process. If you could just, unless you feel confident, which I do feel confident with that statement, but maybe if you could just follow up a planning just to make sure that that is the case and/or if we need to take more comprehensive vote regarding the vote before us and any future federal CARES Act funding. Thank you.
Yes, and I can verify that as well. Thank you.
All right. We have a motion for approval. Attorney Hahn?
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
It's unanimous vote.
All right. And so the next item on our agenda, item number six, is a vote to select and approve a member, a board designee to the Envision Arlington task force, is it? I'm sorry, Envision Arlington? Is it just called Envision Arlington?
Envision Arlington. And I, this is either for the Advisory Board or the Standing Committee. I'm not sure if Mr. Diggins knows.
Mr. Diggins?
So we, I was under the impression from it's Brazil and our clerk, that it was going to be the Advisory Board, which is different than the Standing Committee as far as I understand. And I will certainly be in touch with Town Council to find out how that will affect my other interactions with the various, with the Standing Committee. I'm not an official member of the Standing Committee. I'm not a voting member. I attend a lot of their meetings, which is one of the reasons I was recommended for this position, but I also participated in some of the task groups associated. So I will check in with you, Mr. Hahn, to find out what I can continue doing. But I would very much like to be a part of the Advisor Board.
Understood.
Attorney Hahn, is that correct?
Yeah, yes. So if, thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the Select Board can serve on more than one committee or board so long as there's some specific thing that's calling for them to be appointed. So there's no problem with being on the Select Board and being on the Advisory Board per se, and there's no problem with being on the Standing Committee as well as on the Advisory Board. But my understanding is that Mr. Diggins is not on the Standing Committee as a member, but it's just involved with a lot of Envision Arlington activities. Envision Arlington task groups don't have a membership. They have a sort of set of liaisons that are derived from the Standing Committee. So again, I'm not, I'm not concerned at all, but we can certainly talk about it more just to clarify which roles come with which responsibilities.
Thank you.
Is it appropriate to take a vote and make Mrs. Diggins our liaison to the Advisory Board?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. All right.
Can I just ask a question on that to the Chair or to the Chair of Town Council? Is this a vote before the Select Board or is this a designate appointment with other, as with other subcommittees by the Chair? Which wouldn't need to vote?
This is, to my understanding, you folks are voting on whether or not to have Mr. Diggins serve as a Select Board's representative, which I believe is ex officio on the civilian advisory board, which is created by Town Meeting. So it should be a vote of the full board rather than what you're referencing, Mrs. Mahan, which is subcommittees and entities of the Select Board. Does that make sense?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And yes, and Attorney Hahn, thank you.
So, so what I understood is that this was the Advisory Board for Envision Arlington, not the civilian review board, you know?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Yeah. And so I would be a designate to the Envision Arlington Advisory Board. I, this is different than being a liaison to the Standing Committee, because usually when you're a liaison, you're an ex officio. But I think on the Advisory Board, that's a whole different function. And to, I think, the extent that the board makes decisions, I would be voting as the Select Board's representative on the Advisory Board for Envision Arlington.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I apologize, Ms. Mahan, Mr. Diggins. I'm sorry. I get my Advisory Board wires crossed.
Yeah.
So yeah, if this is a selection to a Advisory Board for Envision Arlington, it's still not a entity of the Select Board. So I think a vote is appropriate. I understand the board's handled some of these things in a couple of different ways, but it's not as if it's an appointment to one of your committees. My understanding is that this would be an appointment of a larger body and you're selecting which one of you will serve on this rather than a body that a member of the board is sort of on as, as a part of its own subcommittee or its own advisory groups. This group is to advise Envision Arlington. So I think it would still be appropriate.
All right. I will take a motion to appoint Mr. Diggins as the Select Board's appointee to the Envision Arlington Advisory Board.
So moved.
Second by Mr. DeCoursey. Any additional comments, Mrs. Mahan?
No.
Any additional comments, Mr. Diggins? All right, Attorney Hahn?
Again, my apologies for the confusion. Mrs. Mahan?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
It's unanimous vote.
I apologize for the confusion on my behalf as well. All right. Next on our agenda, we have correspondence received. So we have forthcoming MBTA service changes in Arlington in the region. Daniel Amstest, Senior Transportation Planner. We have dangerous sidewalk from ice and snow at 882 to 892 Massachusetts Avenue. Patricia Warden, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Eight, former Chair, Arlington School Committee. And we have emergency egress ingress to private way section of Peck Ave. Cheryl Vosmer, 25 Peck Ave, residents of Peck Avenue and Lanark Road. And Mr. DeCoursey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move receipt of seven and eight and nine. I move referral to DPW to the Police Department and to Town Council who have all been working on this issue.
Thank you. And Mr. Diggins?
Second.
Any additional comments, Mr. Carroll?
No additional.
And Mrs. Mahan?
All set, thank you.
Thank you. Attorney Hahn?
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
It's unanimous vote.
Thank you. And it takes us to new business. Attorney Hahn?
Happy holidays, everybody. Thank you.
Mr. Chapdeline?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think some of my new business may overlap with some other, with some of the board members. But first, I would say happy holidays to both the board and the viewing public tonight. Next, I want to share that had both an interesting and I would say somber or solemn weekend in Arlington. And the interesting part, I was able to tour the Food Link building that's being renovated. I know some board members have had that opportunity as well. And just from my own perspective, the transformation of that property is really truly incredible. They're getting close to being finished early in 2021. And the, you know, they've been working on this vision for a number of years now, still serving the community with their critical, their critical services, especially critical in the time of this pandemic with food insecurity on the rise. And for anybody, for any board members who haven't had a chance to tour, I know they would be happy to give you a tour, and I highly recommend it. They've really, I think they're, they're providing a community benefit via their work, and they'll ultimately be providing a community asset with this building being both aesthetically beautiful and sustainably functional when it's complete. So so that was a very nice opportunity. Immediately following that, I was able to join Chairman Hurd at a ceremony called Wreaths Across America at the Mount Pleasant Cemetery, taking an opportunity in partnership with our, the town's sponsor in this event, Iron Mountain, to recognize the service of veterans during this holiday season. So that was, once again, excellently put together by our Veterans Agent, Jeff Chunglo. And then finally, on Sunday, I joined Board Member Diggins at, again, a solemn ceremony where the ghost bike for Charlie Proctor, the young man who was tragically killed at the intersection of Mass Ave in Appleton Street, the ghost bike to, for his remembrance and his memorial was placed by his family and those he loved, his loved ones on Sunday, along with some folks from Mass, Mass Bike who helped with the placement. So, you know, speaking with some of the family, this was their first opportunity to really have any opportunity to, excuse me, to memorialize Charlie. You know, they weren't able to do a memorial service based on the pandemic. So, you know, difficult for them and certainly difficult to be there, but important to provide the opportunity to memorialize him. So that's all I have for new business. Thank you.
Yep. Mr. Diggins?
Yeah, so three things. I'll keep them short, you know, and maybe I should have said this when the letters came through, but, but respected MBTA, now that it seems like we're going to get some money from the feds. It'll be interesting to see how things, how that impacts the, the changes to the service cuts. I mean, and, and as I said in one of our previous meetings, I will pursue finding out more about how we are assessing things. Regardless of what happens with the funding, that's something I definitely will plan, will follow through on. And in conjunction with what the Town Manager said today, just wanting to commend him and all the work that he's done on that. It was a long process, me getting this done. There are lots of things, threw things up. Things were thrown off track a lot, and the Town Manager really persisted. And I have to also say that I was impressed, but not surprised to hear that Michael Rodamacher had a DPW and his son actually cleared off, you know, the sidewalk space in order to make it possible because the priority was to really take care of store removal in town. And he realized that in order to do that, it was, he needed to keep things on track and he and his son cleared that out. And I was impressed by that and very thankful for that. And the last thing is I attended the Arlington Economic Recovery, no, Arlington Economic Development Recovery Task Force meeting. And, and this was right after we had done the rollback. And, you know, there, there were businesses there that were affected by primarily the gym scene and the owners were, were clearly upset. But I have to say, I, I was impressed by how they, how respectful they were to everyone. And I also have to commend the Town Manager and also Natasha Warden, I think is her last name, who were able to respond be in a way that defended their position without being defensive. And I thought the whole thing was really carried out well. And as I've said many times, we make the best decisions we can. We, they may not be ultimately the right decisions, but we do them with the information that we have. And I support the Town Manager and the way that he listened to folks and made it clear that if things need to be reconsidered, we will. So thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Carroll?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just want to note that this is our last meeting, but it's been a very, very difficult year. I mean, not only in our town, but throughout the world. And I want to, we can't say enough, you know, thank you to all of our town staff, Health and Human Services, our first responders, as well as the many volunteers who have responded during the COVID crisis during this, you know, just very difficult time and have helped facilitate some other difficult conversations we've had around equity and, and and justice, our work all across the board that I know is going to continue. Equity and, and justice, our work all across the board that I know is going to continue, so. I'll just note that today is the winter solstice, which means it is the shortest day of the year and from here on out, we're going to see. Longer days and more light and. I hope that as we move into the new year that. We'll also kind of metaphorically see a lot more light as we start to distribute the COVID vaccine and. You know, bring our community back, back up. Onto its, to full strength, so. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I wish, you know, greetings of the season to all my colleagues and staff and to. All the residents of Arlington and is hoping for a happy new year.
Thank you. Mrs. Mahan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I'll try to be as brief as I possibly can be. First, I'd like to thank all the men and women. GPW Department of Public Works. For their work on our most recent storm, considering that we've lost. We're down with subcontractors to help out with that. And I know they put in long hours with our first responders to. Respond to that storm event, but I think it was a good, I don't want to say dress rehearsal, but for any storms coming in the future. I've been through Arlington and then Burlington, Lexington, Bedford, et cetera. And we were curb to curb and most of them still aren't there in terms of the main thoroughfares as well as. Curb to curb around our schools, which is very important. The second thing is something that myself, my colleagues have had extensive conversations with the town manager. In terms of the coronavirus, COVID nineteen and now a vaccination plan. The manager has indicated to all of us that through Christine Bonjourno, our Director of Health and Human Services, Board of Health. That will be the entity that is sort of, not sort of, that is overseeing Arlington's vaccination program. And. I feel very confident in terms of how they will handle that. And I just would leave through the town manager to our. HSS. Director Bonjourno in terms of sort of getting that plan out and or. A very difficult FAQ, frequently asked question sheet that. Might appear on the town's website in terms of, if we could think of the top ten questions that somebody might have in Arlington. That they might have regarding a vaccination program. Sort of centered around certain populations that might not fall into a regular. Town interface or PCP or, I'm looking and I've had this conversation with the manager, something towards. Developmentally delayed, not so much children, but adults, twenty-two plus. I don't know if there's anything the town can offer through the Board of Health, Council on Aging, Commission on Disabilities, but I just wanted to put that out there. And then. The third point, we sort of talked about this a little bit tonight, but the second allocation of federal CARES Act money. That the town of Arlington has received provides. Similar program to small businesses that we offered in the first round, however, the guidelines have been extended, it used to be five or less employees, I think it's now ten. If we can get that word out and I would just say to the planning department through the town manager. When we initially did this program, the town received. Really very little applicants and the issue was getting the word out and I've had this conversation at CDBG Subcommittee meetings that. We need to focus on. Lowering come small business, but that means we need to get the word out a different way. And what happened with the first round of the CARES Act two funding was myself along with. Four other Arlington residents, including Kathleen Dossie from Cambridge Savings Bank. We split up the town of Arlington, not just Mass Ave, but Summer Street and Broadway and. We all checked in and made sure we walked into the businesses that were applicable. And saw far more applicants and I would just say with the additional staff adding, added to the planning department. I'd be willing to do that again, but I'd rather not. I'm earning my three thousand dollar a year salary. So I would hope that the planning department could do that. But if that doesn't happen, if we could do what we did before, if we don't get that many. Applications, we can extend the deadline and then myself and others can go out and get that word out and I'm not trying to be a complainer, it's just. Hoping this, me, myself and the citizens don't have to do that again. And then I'm still waiting on something I've said, I think, three or four times now in terms of. Being mindful of safety of employees as well as delivering town services. I do know. Again, town hall, the select board office. Town clerks, treasurers, and I do see the purchasing agent three days a week. But if we could really, I've seen like the city of Worcester and others that. For them city, but town offices are available to be open, usually by appointment only. I'd like to see that with. All of our town services, not, not just in the town hall. I really like to see a plan on that, I, I don't want to ask for it again. And then we did this at the beginning of the meeting. But happy Hanukkah, merry Christmas, joyous Kwanzaa. And God bless the new year, I can't wait to end twenty twenty and enter into twenty twenty-one, thank you, Mr. Chair.
You, Mr. Corsi.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just a couple of things. First off, this morning, Mrs. Mahan, the town manager and I participated in the long range planning committee meeting. To start discussing or continue discussions on. Presentation of revisions to the five-year plan and the budgeting process for fiscal twenty-two and. Given everything that has happened in town and around the country and uncertainty with future. State aid and just receipts, it's going to be a particularly challenging year, thought it was a very good meeting. There, there were some discussions today that surrounding the schools and the challenges that they have because of the. Decline in enrollment and how that affects the budget process and, and state aid, so we had a, had a good meeting. There's going to be further meetings in, in January and I will update the board at that time. I also want to wish my colleagues, Mr. Chapdolane and Attorney Heim, happy holidays to town staff and to the residents of Arlington. As Mrs. Mahan said, twenty twenty-one cannot get here soon enough, so thank you very much.
Thank you. I also wanted to just thank DPW for all their work, I know they've been working. Not just the day of the storm, but days and days and days after and, you know, the roads are great and. You know, you can never make it a hundred percent, but they, the job they do is always very commendable compared to surrounding communities, so I want to thank them for all their efforts. As Tom Andrew mentioned, we attended on Saturday the Reese for Across America event. And again, you know, I feel like a broken record sometimes, but I just, I can never say enough about the work that Jeff Chunglo does on behalf of our veterans in town. In the midst of a pandemic, it's really amazing, the, the events that he continues to put on for our veterans and really was a great event, I want to thank Iron Mountain, the principal sponsors. And then just share, you know, that there is a tree of remembrance that's hosted in cemetery. By the War and Terror Memorial and it's a place where residents can go to hang either ribbons that are provided or specific. Remembrances for veterans in their lives, so it's certainly a good thing to participate if you're able to do so. Then the last thing, just to mention briefly, is I just want to share that I did pull papers. To run for reelection to the Arlington Select Board, so I do intend to resubmit them and. And run for a second term, you know, I've had a great three years, it's been very challenging, it started off a little slow and then. Sped up very quickly and, you know, the past year has been very difficult for everyone. And there's a lot that we've accomplished, but there's really a lot that we still have to do and, you know, I think I have the energy to participate in that. So I will be. Engaging in whatever a virtual camp, I'll have to take some notes from Mrs. Mahan and Mr. Diggins as to what a virtual campaign looks like, but, you know, I'm happy to be moving forward with that. So on that note, I will take a motion to adjourn.
So.
Motion to adjourn by Mr. Kara, seconded by Mrs. Mahan, attorney hein.
Mrs. Mahan.
Yes, thank you, attorney hein.
Mr. De Corsi.
Yes.
Mr. Diggins.
Yes.
Mr. Kuro.
Yes.
Mr. Heard.
Yes.
It's unanimous vote.
Thank you all.
Good night, folks.
Take care, see you all.